Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the June 14th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our thought for the day is Proverbs 17:6, grandchildren are the crowning glory of the aged, parents are the pride of their children. Let's hope. Commissioner Kayla, do you have the dog today?
No.
Oh, Tim? Dog warden.
Good morning, this is Kennel number 10. She's a three to four-year-old pit bull mix, brindle in color. She's available today. We have like 36 dogs, so we need some adoptions this week, so come on by and see us, thank you.
She's posing, she's posing. Thanks, Tim. Madam Clerk?
And a resolutions, number one, investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Propriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a few potential hires at Job and Family Services and at Solid Waste I wish to discuss with the Board. Also, I'm going to receive a fact-finding report from the hearing we had with United Auto Workers of America and the Job and Family Services Department. We have to review that, possibly take action on that today. I also want to update you on negotiations with the United Steelworkers and the 911 employees and the operating engineers and the Bridge employees and potential purchase of real estate. All those topics are allowable in the Sunshine Act for Executive Session discussion, so to ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting, we go into executive session and we discuss those items that I've identified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the minutes of June 7, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Request the auditor pursuant to ORC 5705.03 to certify to the Commissioners the total current tax valuation of the county and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated for five years for Lorraine County 911 Agency for a .50 mil replacement, .50 mil renewal, .55 mil increase, and .60 mil increase to be placed on November 2017 ballot.
Mr. Cortez, do you have any comments on this?
Well, I have a few, if you'd like to just have a brief discussion. We can talk in more depth in a few weeks when we actually have to vote on what to place on the ballot for consideration by the taxpayers. They've always been very supportive, very heavily supportive of the 911 levies. Couple things that are going on, we're in the middle of building a new 911 center, it's well overdue. The previous center had been expanded in 2000, so we're coming up on 17, 18 years on that expansion. It wasn't a very good expansion to begin with, it was kind of stuck at the back of the old center. At that time, they probably should have built a new center, but they were getting ready to build a justice center and cost issues and changes in administration and so forth. But we've managed to eke out a number of years, but the center is now becoming obsolete. Plus, our backup center has, from day one, not been what I would consider a proper backup, but we've been able to manage to keep that working. We came to the point a few years ago where we need to get the next generation 911 equipment. We've been looking at that issue. We either had to build a new backup, move to the backup, and then redo our primary center and put new equipment in and then move back to the primary center. Didn't make a lot of sense. We thought it was a time to make the move, build a new primary center while we operated out of the current primary center, and then move to the new primary and add some additional equipment and make our current primary our backup. Overall, the savings in cost was considerable doing it that way, and we gained a new facility that could take us 25 to 30 years into the future and with the expansion capability to continue to take work from the agencies within the county that slowly but surely bringing work into the primary PSAP at the E-911 Agency. Now, what does that all mean? That all means that we've had some increased cost. We went out the last time, we had a small increase in the 911 levy. We had to pay for the new building, we had new towers, we had to renovate the building. We got the building at a substantial discount. We had a $15,000 square foot call center that was really, were very well-built for about half the price it would have cost us, maybe less than that. I think we probably got it for about 40 cents on the dollar. The renovations are more for our needs, there's minor renovation inside, freshening on the outside, but the equipment's going to be substantial. We originally had thought about 3 million, but I'm thinking now along the lines of about 1.5, 1.8 because technology has changed in the last three years and overall, the cost is coming down in that technology. But all those things have a cost. The biggest cost we've incurred in the last few years is connecting the four points of this county with the New World Software, Tyler Industries. It didn't go as well as we thought, we had a lot of hiccups in that program, but we're there. Police departments at each corner of this county can now share data and information and talk to each other. We're still growing out of that conductivity. There's still little problems here and there, but they're being tackled. That was a $3.5 million undertaking, not to mention that we went into equipment sharing, various departments had equipment that we had to retune, move, new microwave equipment to be able to make that communication possible. The records-keeping software, the changes in the software at the Sheriff's Department, moving the records, all the county records on the servers at the 911 for all the departments. I can go on and on. I mean, I think it's some of the best work we've done. The rollout, again, didn't go well, we had problems. Few of them are on our side of the house, it was a learning curve. A lot of them are on the software side of the house. As you know, I had to step into that process pretty hard, but even with my presence there, we still had, we still had some challenges to overcome. The police departments and their folks that were on the build team here did a great job working through those problems and probably this summer, I'm going to have a look-back presentation on what we went through, the agony, remember the old victory, agony defeat? Well, we didn't really get defeated, but we felt defeated a few times along the way, but there was a lot of cost, a lot of money spent to make sure that this county had the probability for its safety forces to communicate with one another and to take care of each other. Nothing's worse than one of our people on the front line to be out there, be isolated, not have the right information, the right technology, the right capability. And that existed in this county as recently as a year ago. And in some pockets, something still exists. As you know, another initiative that I've brought to you that we want to tackle in a few years is putting up some towers around the county because there's still little pockets that where we lose communication, especially out in the rural areas of the county. Now, you may say, "Well, it's just for the sheriffs," but, well, we have mutual aid with all these police departments, so it would not be unusual to have a leary or a Lorraine out in those areas assisting the sheriffs and vice versa. So we need to make sure that every square inch of this county, we never lose contact with our safety forces, it's just not acceptable. And we need to deal with that problem too. We had to deal with a problem we didn't anticipate when they narrow-banded all the radio frequencies about three years ago. We put a million dollars into all the communication equipment so all of the fire departments and police departments in Lorraine County could better communicate on their radio traffic. As soon as they narrow-banded all of those frequencies, some of these folks, they weren't able to go across the city, never mind out into other parts of the community. So we took care of that, and that was another big expense that came out of 911 funds, but it was very directly related because we do radio traffic with all of those departments. So where am I going with all this? Why am I, you know, going on and on? I'm analyzing all of these costs, looking at the one-offs, what is the true operating cost? If we don't have program costs, we don't have expansion costs. And I want to leave open the door for the goal of those numbers with each one of you individually. That's why I've asked for four different scenarios. One would be just the renewal, the other would be replacement. I'd like to see what the valuation of the replacement is, that may be sufficient. I think the renewal itself may be a little soft and then too small, very small increase looks. And I'll bring you some numbers. And then we have to talk about where we want this agency to go and how we want to continue to improve this community. And lastly, let's also speak to something that's going to, we're going to have a presentation here in this summer, and we had it last fall. We're almost done with the GPS, excuse me, yes, GPS with all the safety forces. Each department now knows where their resources are, they can share where those resources are with the department. Before, we didn't have that. We had one or two communities that already had rolled some of that out, but not in a big way. And I cannot thank the chief in Amherst, the police chief in Amherst enough for his leadership in this issue. I have been really, really busy, as you guys know, and while I was working on this project, I was really, instead of running at it, I was crawling at it, and he's really shepherded this program through in Lorraine County. In fact, I got some materials from him this morning, and the rollout's almost complete on this. And we're going to go to, we have Phase 2 and 3 that we talked about, what we like to do, and that includes school buses and things like that to keep our children safe. We're in a dangerous world, we know that.
Snowplows.
Excuse me?
Snowplows.
Well, that wouldn't be from 911, but that would be more in the public sector, the cities wanting to use it. There's extension capability. We bought the core materials and the core equipment that can be expanded. That would be a cost that would be shared from other funding. I'm looking at the school bus issue with the schools though, seeing how that translates into what we can pay for, what we can't, what we can work with the schools. But, again, it's much less costly for them because we have the core elements in place and the expandability, so they can basically hitchhike for a lot less cost and happen to buy the car themselves. So that's Phase 2, I'm waiting for Phase 1 to be done, but we had to put several hundreds of thousands of dollars into that. But we're making it a lot safer for our people to operate in a dangerous environment. There is no amount of money that can be saved by not taking care of our people. And first responders, whether they be EMT, fire, police, they have to be supported correctly, and that's what we're doing. And those things have some cost, they're not huge cost if they're spread out amongst the whole community, but it has to be taken care of. Now, we're not buying fire trucks and things like that in the community, we're just making sure that certain capabilities with communication, conductivity, record-keeping, sharing, software, all of that's there. The rest of it falls down to the local community. So I don't want people to take my dialogue here in the wrong way, but I need to have those conversations, which you want on one, get your vision for where you want to go in the next five years, remembering that this is the first time out for the levy, and we have three times out. And hopefully, the taxpayers will be satisfied. We're going to have the presentations this summer. We're going to, I was hoping to have the new center open for tours in late October, I'm not sure that's going to happen. We still may do something. Even depending on how much we got done, we still may have it. I think, I think they deserve to take a look at what they're paying for, but you'll have to vote on this probably in about two weeks on what you want to send to them. So that's a long dialogue for a short question. And there'll be more on that when we start talking numbers in about two weeks.
It's very important.
There'll be harder conversation with numbers.
I just want to thank for all the work that you've done on this, and also, it's another example of us working in partnership with the safety forces throughout Lorraine County. So this isn't something where we're just saying, "This is the way we want to do it, take it or leave it." This is one of those where we're saying, "We want your input," it's an inclusionary process, and I know that when I've had conversations with some of the first responders, they're happy with the way things have gone. I know I've also attended some quality control meetings with the City of Illyria and UH, talking about working with our 911 center and constantly improving the way that we can quickly respond and get there to the aid of people needing help. They've been very pleased with the direction things have been going, but, you know, you can only stretch this equipment and these services so far before you need to modernize, and I think, as we all know, you modernize thing one day and a year later, it probably needs to be modernized again. But, so we certainly have stretched the taxpayer dollars, we've put in place a good backup system as well, too. So just appreciative of all the work you've put in and just thankful for all the input and the working partnership we've had with many of the safety forces leaders throughout the county to put in place a structure that's a strong structure, but obviously, it requires resources to keep it going.
Okay. Thank you. So moved.
Second.
Anything further? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey? Aye.
Request the auditor pursuant to ORC 5705.19 LL and 307.45A to certify to Commissioners the total current tax valuation of the county and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated for five years for the criminal justice service pertaining to drug enforcement services, Lorraine County Drug Task Force for a .080 mil replacement and .080 mil renewal to be placed on November 2017.
Just?
The, I had dialogue with the Drug Task Force. They're out chasing bad guys, we take care of this end of it. This is the Commissioners' Levy, Commissioners' Initiative. We take care of funding the Drug Task Force, they take care of trying to get the folks off the street. Dennis Kavanaugh and I had extensive conversation with regard to what the funding needs would There's a couple things I can't talk about right now, I will brief you each individually in private. I will tell you that there's a huge announcement coming. We're getting ready to rain terror on the opiate epidemic in Lorraine County, and I mean rain terror. But I'm not prepared to talk about it publicly yet, but a collaborative's coming together, and it's coming together in a big way. You know some pieces of it, you're going to be part of it. We're going to, we're going to have to fund a few things, but it's time. And I realize arresting people and getting drugs off the street, they just get replaced, but you've got to keep taking them off the street as fast as they come. Been in touch through the Drug Task Force with DEA, FBI, working out of Cleveland, talking about resources. So something big's coming, big.
We need something big.
And how does Donald Trump say it? Big, big?
Huge, huge.
Huge, huge, huge. So, but we need to continue our initiatives through this. The funding is okay. I'm going to ask for modification, I would also like to look at .090, a slight tick just to see what that looks like. I really wish, maybe before we have to vote on this, I can get this whole thing cobbled together to make this announcement on what we're going to be doing in Lorraine County. It's going to be really exciting, and it's going to demonstrate our commitment to trying to tackle this opiate epidemic. If you read the papers this weekend, it was stunning, what did they say, the first, we only have one weekend in the year where there wasn't an opiate death in Lorraine County?
January.
That's completely unacceptable. And while we need additional resources to help those people that find themselves falling into addiction, we also need resources to try to limit the access to those things. Both the illegal substances and the substances that are being procured legally though, that are being somehow introduced into illegal use. So I can't say more. I want to, but I can't, and hopefully in the coming weeks, that'll be there. But if you would modify that, and we could take a look at those numbers, and I'll talk to you, and I'll let you know what we're doing, and then I will try to finish up all the things we need to finish up and see how soon we can make these announcements on what our push is going to be in Lorraine County.
Yeah, that's another example of how we basically have to take care of ourselves because Columbus certainly isn't helping us out. And, you know, I was reading even yesterday, I guess now, the latest plan is to take 35 million from local government funds to help fund the opiate fight. When those local funds are needed for the, you know, the safety forces to be out there, as you said, investigating and arresting people who are pushing this stuff, yet we continue to sit on a $2 billion rainy day fund, and we're not using that money in the opiate fight.
Well, Commissioner, you know, you take them off the street, more people come in, but you've just got to keep taking them off the street. You've just got to make it unpleasant to be here, difficult to be here. If they move in and they're not harassed, it's just too easy. And we need to continue harass, continue to make them move around, continue to make it difficult to do business here. I'm not saying we're going to shut the spigot off by any means, but we're going to make it known that this is not going to be a comfortable place to do business, and we mean that in Lorraine County. So I appreciate your support on this, the Drug Task Force, the sheriff, Dennis Kavanaugh, the people that work there, a lot of people, a lot of the, let me also say that a lot of the police departments around Lorraine County loan resources to the whole Drug Task Force Initiative. They do great work, a lot of times, we don't talk about a lot of the things that are going on there. It's been a long time since we've been able to do our strike forces that we used to do a few years ago. Remember, we plugged a lot of money into doing those strike teams into the communities. I really wish we had that money again to make those kind of strike task force, but we're trying to put some things together, and we'll talk more in the coming weeks about this, these big initiatives that we're going to put on this coming over the next year, you know, over a period of a year, two years to battle this, because it is a war.
Yes, it is. It's a war on people.
As soon as the auditor gets back with us with the numbers, we can make some decisions on how we want to go and talk to Chief Kavanaugh and the sheriff and...
Just one thing before you vote, do you want .90 renewal and replacement, Mr. Cortez?
Yes, I'd like to look at the three scenarios, just to get, because we don't, we don't much have to use it, but if we don't have him certify it, then we can't even begin to discuss that when putting it forward.
I just want to make sure that's...
Thank you.
Make a motion as amended?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey? Aye.
Receive and journalize the annexation expedited to petition of 82.3437 acres from Columbia Township to the City of Elmsted Falls. Dave Gill, agent for petitioner Eric Calibres, authorized partner of Riverside Golf Association Ohio Partnership, July 18 at 9:30 a.m., which was the 44th day, will be for the review.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Pose the privatization...
Privatization.
Yeah, privateness of the nation's air traffic control operations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I mentioned this at last week's Board meeting. Obviously, Oberlin plays a critical role with the Air Traffic Control Center there. The President has recently proposed taking a look at privatizing the air traffic control system. I've been in touch with the National Air Traffic Controllers Association and have also been in touch with the local representative, Mike Hanlon, with the Great Lakes Region. He is their Legislative Committee Chair. And, you know, the air traffic controllers are saying that, you know, they certainly agree that there needs to be an update in the infrastructure of the system, that it needs to be modernized. However, they have reservations about the reform being in the form of a for-profit model, rather, or a privatized model. And I think what's also important to point out is that, you know, a lot of the airlines are pushing for this to be moved to the private sector, other than Delta Airlines. And Delta Airlines stood out among all the airline carriers, saying that they were actually opposed to the privatization of the air traffic control system, saying that it would actually increase costs for consumers, according to their study, by some 30%. With 300 jobs on the line in Oberlin, and that would be a devastating economic impact to the community of Oberlin and to Lorraine County as well, too, it plays a critical role. We all know that that air traffic control system was even involved on 9/11 with the one flight that went down. But, so this resolution is just indicating that we would be opposed to the privatization of the air traffic control system.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize inter-agency agreement with County Health District to collect application information for the distribution of stroller travel systems to eligible clients effective June 1, 2017 through September 30, 2017. And authorize director to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutors for a western form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey? Aye.
Under the engineer, approve and enter a general engineering services agreement with Katie McCartney Associates Mansfield, the amount of $49,500 as a part of the 12-month task order to be made from the engineer project account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Receive and journalize annual ditch report on condition of ditches under County Maintenance Fund for year 2017. Authorized auditor access for maintenance as recommended by the engineer for year 2018. Tax should be leaned 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under the treasurer, advertise notice of application under the Uniform Depository Act from any financial institution legally eligible, which may desire to submit a written application to become a public depository of public funds of Lorraine County as provided by the Uniform Depository Act, Section 13533 ORC. Notice will be in the Chronicle and Journal on July 7 and 14 and open at 2:00 p.m. on July 21.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
I have no additional comments this morning, thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
Commissioners, I do have one matter pending litigation to discuss with you in executive session.
Mistress.
I pass, I had no report this morning.
Yeah, crazy day actually in DC, I'm just checking some of the things on, wish the best on our Capitol Police, did a good job. Again, single shooter, regardless of party affiliation, it's something that's really going on, hope to look at gun control, how these things happen. But congresspeople and staffers getting shot practicing for a charity baseball game is just unbelievable.
Practicing softball game, right?
Yeah, just unbelievable. Also, today's Flag Day on June 14, the birth of the American flag. And then we had a busy day Friday, a large agenda in OAKA, as a full governance committee met, discussing a lot of the issues that we've worked on for the past 90 days, but Lorraine County did well in receiving funds for roadwork and such. City of North Ridgeville got $51,000 towards their senior transportation, so overall, very good quarter for Lorraine County in improving our transportation. End of my report.
Yeah, I just want to commend you. I know under your leadership and your involvement down there that, you know, I think in the past, there were concerns about whether Lorraine County was actually getting its fair share, and I know you've worked very hard at changing that direction, so...
Good people to work with.
Much appreciated, and yeah, good group of people down there, so. I was going to start first by sending out an apology to Brad Dickens for getting stuck in one of our elevators the other day. That was actually a federal directive, I think, from the White House about trapping reporters in elevators and keeping them away from public officials, but so...
I want to know who let him out. They should be fired.
Who let him out, I know. When I inquired about it, it's like, "How long was he in there?" And somebody said, "Not long enough." No, so...
I did, I followed it.
So anyhow, try not to have that happen anytime soon, or always take a good book with you, you know how that works, so. The Cabela's reception with the Cabela's fishing tournament that was held in Lorraine over[1764.32] The Cabela's reception with the Cabela's fishing tournament that was held in Lorain over the weekend, it all launched on Wednesday night, everybody registering, and I have to tell you, I left this event just so excited. Had a chance to go through the line and talk with a lot of the fishermen and women who were competing, over five hundred of them, and just asking them about where they had come in from and if they'd ever fished in the lake before, in Lake Erie, and whether they'd even been to the area. And most of them said they hadn't been to the area before, that, they also said that they said folks here were super friendly, and they said whether it was in the stores or police officers, whatever the case may be, they said everybody was just super friendly, which we already know that about this area. But these individuals came from as far away as Kansas, Nebraska, Texas, all to compete in this tournament, and, you know, we had made an investment through our Visitors Bureau and did a match from the Lorain Port Authority, working in partnership with them and with Cabela's to make this walleye fishing tournament possible. And even if you go to the, the National Walleye Federation website, you know, a lot of great stories on there about what, what transpired, what took place. So it really brought a lot of national attention to Lorain County, to Lorain, Ohio. We'll be getting a more updated report from our Visitors Bureau, probably sometime in the next couple of weeks, but we're out there talking with the business people, and Jim, I know you were aware of one of those conversations with one of the businesses who indicated that just in the days leading up to the tournament, had done more business than normally would be done in the fishing season, correct?
Outback, I think that's, they're, they're up on Colorado six-eleven. My understanding was, they said they made their year during the tournament. Unfortunately, they, they, they also indicated that most people weren't really going to Cabela's, 'cause it was quite a ways from the Black River Landing, and that they were doing a lot of shopping closer. So the, the bait shops, the tackle shops, places like Outback, they, they, they did a tremendous amount of business. So we're, we're sampling businesses right now to see the impact. That was just a couple phone calls. Unfortunately, there was a vacation planned, I didn't get the information before that vacation occurred, I just got some isolated data, but I'm looking to get some data sets to more clearly qualify the impact economically from the fishing tournament. Initially, I didn't think it was gonna be that significant, I wanna be honest with you, the, but the, the massive amount of people that actually came, while it was still a private event, not open to folks that fish here that could join it, it really brought some, some attention here, number one, number two, it brought more spending than I anticipated. So we wanna take a strong look at the churning effect of those dollars, because we did have a significant investment. The City Port Authority, along with the, with the county and the Business Bureau, also partnered for a forty-nine thousand dollar investment to, to make this happen here in Lorain County. Now, that was an up to, we don't have the final tally on what was spent.
Those are bed tax dollars, not general revenue funds.
Correct, bed tax dollars. There, there was a lot of, a lot of rooms that were booked late, so we didn't, we didn't, we don't have a count on that either. There was, there was spillover into Erie County, too. That, that naturally happens, there, that's gonna happen with the, the beautiful area in the downtown Vermillion area, along the lagoons and the, and the river there, but there was considerable spending all along the lakeside. So I'll try to get you better information, more information in the, in the coming weeks, and then we can have a better talk over, but overall, it was a huge success.
Yeah, I'm normally considered to be a laid-back guy, but I gotta tell you, I was pumped and excited after I left that place. It was pretty exciting to see us in the national spotlight like that, and something may also find interesting, each day, the, the fishermen, they're told that if they finish in the top three, that they should not have any alcohol until they're told that they can have, I guess, a drink after the tournament day, because they actually polygraph the fishermen.
Yeah, I, I understand that the sandbagging a fish or two on the boat is not an uncommon practice, so they, they polygraph and make sure they didn't, you know, just bring their own fish along with them. But, yeah, also something that I wasn't aware of, they had been here significantly earlier, fishing the waters, looking for the sweet spots before the tournament began, so a lot of the, a lot of the impact to our community was happening a few weeks out. We were getting word that there was a lot of bait and tackle being bought and a lot of fuel, and, and that there was a lot of increased activity along the river and lake front. We really didn't know, this was new for us, the event last year was a different event than it was this year, even though it had Cabela's attached to it, just for a frame of reference, they were, they were two different events, just the sponsoring was very similar. So we're trying to digest all of that, and we'll have more, but I was a little bit suspect about the, our whole involvement, but, but I'm, I'm glad that I was proved, proved wrong on, on a lot of my thinking, it was very, 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 very good.
Yeah, it was interesting.
For a ninety-five thousand dollar first prize, I think these guys take it pretty serious.
Well, I, I had, I, I didn't attend the event, because we had commissioners going to the event to, to take, to take care of our representation, but I did see some of the rigs. These boys have toys. I don't know if there was any girls, they let me not leave them out, but...
There were a couple of teams.
They, they, they got, they got some expensive toys, you know, I know, I know the race people have very expensive stuff, but, but these people do, too.
Yeah, it was interesting, 'cause when they were weighing in the fish, they were asking them, you know, "So where did you find, you know, make the big catch?" And no one wanted to talk about their location, they wouldn't even say if they went east or west, or where they went, they just didn't wanna talk about it. Yeah, it was just a great location, so, but what was interesting, you know, you have these teams in from, as I said, Iowa and Kansas, Nebraska, Texas, all across the country, and two guys from Poland, Ohio, won the tournament near Youngstown, so I'm sure some, some of those guys are scratching their heads when they went back, trying to figure out how these local guys ended up winning. But anyhow, just, just a great event, really put us in the spotlight, and we'll be updating you more as we get more information on the outcome and the feedback from the business people. Also had the opportunity on Saturday to attend the unveiling of the monument for local members of the Tuskegee Airmen, and I have to tell you, it was just, just a really great event. I had no idea that we actually had nine one-time residents of Oberlin who were Tuskegee Airmen and flew there during World War Two, and some of the family members came in, I had a chance to talk with a few of them that actually came in from, from Atlanta, we had a, there was a speaker came in from Virginia as well, too, but it was just a really, really great event, really enjoyed that. Also, on Saturday, they had a celebration of life for Robert Repus, who is a former Elyria Township Finance Director there, and also a former Board of Education member. A lot of family and friend, friends came to the Elyria Township Fire Hall for that, and always enjoyed working with, with Robert, he's going to be greatly, greatly missed. Was not able to attend the unveiling of the African-American flag at Black River, that took place on Sunday at Station one hundred at the Black River. And then this evening, we got the annual Strawberry Festival at Saint John's Church. Normally, that's the one day during the year where that's my dinner, 'cause that's at four o'clock, so I get to participate in the Strawberry Festival, and then I don't have anything to eat for the rest of the day. And then on the square in Elyria, they'll have the Flag Day celebration. Madam President, I think that completes my report.
Commissioners proclaim today as World Other Abuse Day in Lorain County, and then next Tuesday, June twentieth, at nine thirty, will be our ditch hearing on Luther. More correspondence?
Uh, move to approve the correspondence and waive the reading.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Lundey.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board this morning? One, one at a time, we actually have a couple takers today. Well, we know who you are, but you have, when you get up there, we need you to tell everybody else who you are.
'Cause you're world famous, everybody knows who you are.
Just to let the board know, I did go to Olmsted Falls Council Meeting last night, and they did the same thing you did. Also, number two, the county shred truck will be in Columbia Township on Saturday. And we've got it all set up, the county came out, Tiffany came out Monday, we went through it, we do a drive-through, people don't get out of their car, the truck stays inside, it can be raining, snowing, ninety degrees outside, everybody's comfortable, so, no big deal.
You're Mike Musco, right? I'm sorry.
My hearing went, went, sir. I'm sorry.
The, did we get that meeting set for next week? I saw yours come through, I haven't seen...
I haven't heard from Mark yet.
Okay, 'cause I wanna come out and have that dialogue with you guys and see what we can work out.
Uh, refer to the email I sent you back, because of all the other stuff, legal stuff's going on, it's...
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I...
But we, we really need to have that dialogue, so I'll, I'll push the issue with them so we can get, get that, get that done, 'cause you, you were good for Monday, I haven't heard from them, so...
No, that's, yeah, just to let you know, it's, you know, we've got so many things going on right now, I, Jerry's just probably glad he doesn't wanna hear Columbia. That's all I have, thank you.
I just wanna also thank you, Dick, for the excellent job you do at Noacko, representing the townships, and I...
Well, by the way, we did ask, before the meeting, I believe Mr. Kayla was involved, we did ask the Mayor of Lorain if we could go to the city and raise chickens, and he just laughed.
The, by the way, for the, for the commissioners, this was the second promised location for the shred truck, we did a press release on it, but I, I got something from Mike Challenger about the shred truck program. I'm hoping before the wintertime that we, we launch our shred program in the community, I just haven't had, he put it on my desk last week, early last week, I just haven't had a chance to get to it, but we need to get that truck more actively involved in the community and get it out there.
Columbia Township, three hundred seventy-five dollars to do a truck, private.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, the truck has a little bit of a limitation, you gotta be careful, we can't, you know, paper clips in the binders and stuff, but, but otherwise, it's really good, it's really good for our community.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, it was a good story in the Chronicle today about it, getting the word out.
Yep. Morning.
Good morning, I'm Jeff Baxter from the City of Elyria, resident thirty-five plus years. Good morning, Commissioners Lundey, Kayla, Kokacy, Mr. Cortez, Mr. Ennis, Madam Clerk, and all others. First, I want to acknowledge that it takes a great deal of skill to run this Lorain County as a business, and it is a big business. There's so many moving parts. Mr. Cortez, you are a marvelous person at the administration level for this county, and I wanna thank you for all the hard work that you do. I think that the citizens of Lorain County are very lucky to have you at the helm, I do appreciate that. I come today to speak about the sales tax increase that was put in place on December fourteenth last year, and it was put in place over the vote of ninety-nine thousand Lorain County voters. I know the voters are not happy with how this tax was put in place, and I know that the voters are not happy with how much money the tax is gonna bring in, because it's more than the budget shortfall that was talked about. I wanna suggest to you that you've solved the wrong problem in the wrong way, okay? The real problem is that more money is needed for safety services, the Sheriff's Department, the jail, and the county courts. This is where the bulk of the problem is at. I think it's, it's a, it's a two to three million dollar problem, is what it looks like to me. The new quarter of a percent sales tax, which feeds the general fund, is not the right way to do this. It's not what voters wanna hear. Voters wanna know where their money is going, and they wanna know that it was spent that way, when it's done. You can't tell the voters, "Oh, we just need more money," and that's essentially, I think, what happened last year. This board has a severe communication problem with the voters. Perhaps a better way of, of solving this can be taken from the experience of Elyria with issue six. I think city councilmen, community leaders, Elyria Police Chief and Department, and concerned citizens figured out how they wanted to spend the money, and they earmarked certain areas, six certain areas. And they also planned how to get the word out to the voters and get this levy in place, and it was a renewable levy, it wasn't forever. Once this was all determined, they enlisted all who were interested to get the word out, and as you know, this issue passed, and it passed handily. So today, the commissioners have lost all credibility with the voters, I believe, but you have the money to run the government. What are the commissioners gonna do? Here's our, here's some of my thoughts. First, immediately pass a new resolution to rescind the vote that was taken on December fourteenth last year, end this tax after one year. This will send a message to the voters that you understand. Second, publish detailed plans on how that additional money will be spent, general fund is not good enough. Three, work with the state legislators to get some of the two billion surplus that's so easily talked about here, quit playing party politics with that. Four, look to put a renewable increase on the ballot in a future year, backed by mayors, backed by community leaders, and concerned citizens. I'll help. Include the townships. Five, create a rainy day fund with this budget and stick to it. Six, don't impose your will after voters have spoken at the polls. Thank you. Jeff Baxter.
Anyone else?
Gerald W. Phillips, four-six-one, Winwood Way, Avon Lake, Ohio. I understand that the commissioners were missing me and felt lonely, so I decided I had to come again.
You heard it wrong, Jerry.
Very wrong?
You heard it wrong.
Oh, okay.
Where'd you hear that?
I, I don't know. I'd like to comment on three items on the agenda and a few non-agenda items. Like to comment on item number ten and item number eleven. Encouraged to see that there's going to be at least an apparent attempt of transparency on these issues, an attempt to educate the public. I would hope that you have public hearings on this, community hearings to educate the public. I look forward to being involved and being informed and participating, and it appears that I would be very supportive of these issues, because I think they're important, as the administrator, Cortez, indicated about the, the drug problem. So that's on item number ten and, and item number eleven. Item number twelve, I see a township trustee is here. You know, this is a sewer issue that I've been involved in in Columbia Township, this particular property has access to the Redford Sewer. It's, it butts on Redford Row, they can tie in immediately, this is all driven by the fact that they don't wanna pay and tap into the system. You know, I expect the trustees will be opposed to it, I'm not sure. The City of Olmsted Falls is encouraged, I didn't attend the meeting. I've been informed that they're not totally receptive, they haven't accepted yet, they're going through the same process, but I would be opposed for this annexation. I think it destroys the township of Columbia Township, and also destroys what is the essence and the purpose of the sewer agreements that the county is in or into, and their, 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 their long-range plans to develop Columbia Township. Those are the three agenda items. Two of the next three items are, are very brief, but I'll get into the one that is more important. The City of Lorain Port Authority has a rocking-on-the-river promotional function. They have a promoter, Bob Early, who runs that event, but I've been recently exposed to what I consider a very personal, disturbing event and circumstances. It occurred on May twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, Friday. A group of well-minded, concerned citizens of Lorain, you know, residents, electors, and taxpayers, you know, contacted Mr. Early, got a booth rental, paid the fees, told them what they were gonna do, had a contract, made the payment. And this group wanted to educate the public on public issues that are facing the county and in the state, wanted to disseminate information, be part of what I consider the typical democratic process of informing the public and debating issues. This group, just like many countless groups, you know, attend public events and do the same process. You can go to the county fair in Lorain County, and you'll see groups have booths, and they disseminate information, and even candidates do that. So that's what they wanted to do. The four issues that, that... that this collaborated group was dealing with was one of the sales tax, uh, second was a ballot access issue for the Libertarian Party, the third was the group that are, are trying to promote a new county charter form of government, and a state group that dealt with the decriminalization of marijuana, they arrived on May 26th at four o'clock, they were told that they had to go see the promoter, Bob Early, who then informed him that he wasn't going to honor the contract, had a check in his hand, and told him that the commissioners were, were opposed to this group having a booth, they were anti-government, and it was a bad government, apparently, Mr. Early was contacted by the Executive Director of the Port Authority, Tom Brown, and it appears that Commissioner Matt Lundey was the individual who contacted, uh, Mr. Brown and conveyed that message, we get important rights here that, that are involved, the ability to speak out and have a public debate, you know, these are precious rights, this is part of the democratic process, First Amendment, uh, petitioning process, you know, we can disagree on issues, and we can have debate, but when you, when you stop that process, okay, because it's content-oriented, that's just wrong, that's just wrong, and I view Mr. Lundey's conduct as irreprehensible from a public elected official, uh, it shouldn't be tolerated, you know, and I believe that, you know, his actions could constitute intentional contractual interference, uh, or with business relationships, and possibly violation of civil rights to petition, you know, uh, First Amendment rights, uh, obviously, you know, Mr. Lundey doesn't understand what the founding fathers of this, of this country, you know, James Madison, Thomas Jefferson, I hope he would read the Federalist Papers about the petitioning process that this country was founded on, and when he's up for reelection, I hope the voters of Lorraine County remember that, you're just adding more fuel to the District Seven argument to reform this county government, and that county officials aren't responsive and listening to the people, the last two comments, uh, I did attend the, uh, walleye tournament, and I was down at the Lorraine County Port Authority, and I'm glad it was, it was a, a success, I think this is the type of thing that I've heard at meetings about promoting economic development that the county should be done, so that was very positive, uh, also, Jeff Baxter gave an excellent presentation, and I saw people writing notes, I hope you really listened to that, because I was here back in, in indicating that I would work with you to do that, and he offered a game plan and a proposal that I would hope that you seriously consider, seriously consider, I've been in Lorraine County 34 years, you know, I have a reputation, you know, you said, you, you know, jokingly, I'm not welcome, but I really care about Lorraine County, you may disagree with my methods and how I do things, but I do care, and I offered those, 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 those efforts to work with you, they were sincere, and I'll work with you on issue number, you know, 10 and 11, the, the 9/11 and the, uh, the drug enforcement, because those are problems that, uh, that are facing not just Lorraine County, but everybody, we may disagree, and you may not agree with my opinion, but I respect your opinion, even though you may not think so, all right, but, we're not going to solve problems in Lorraine County, and Lorraine County's never going to grow unless people respect other people's opinion, allow public debate, and let the democratic process go through, and what happened at the Rocking on the River is just intolerable, intolerable, it doesn't help the process, it just adds fuel to the fire, and makes the process more difficult, thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I'm gonna, going to say about that is that I had some individuals ask me, what did we do to upset the Port Authority, I said, I don't know what you're talking about, they said there are ads in the paper that are showing that the Port Authority is going to have the signatures signed for county government reform, I just simply brought it to the attention of the Director, in case he got any calls, now, where it went from there, I wasn't involved.
Anyone else? Seeing now, I move that we go into executive session as outlined by the Administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting, unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria, these are public meetings, and you are invited to attend, agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us, click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.